Okay, welcome to our May 25 meeting of the Lenox Select Board here at 6:00 PM. We have some TSB, are you live, Kate? Recording or watching this live and it will be recorded. And don't speak English in the eagle here, so is anyone else recording? Okay, that is that. Announcements, we have our annual parade Memorial Day next Monday. That'll be at 8:00 AM at the Dale. That's the first one. We go up to the church, we have a service, we walk around, come back and have a few words that I'll conduct and those who are invited. And then we convene again at noon at the church on the hill.
Eleven forty-five.
Eleven forty-five.
We're gonna kick off at noon, hopefully.
Yeah. I have, I'll certainly be at the Dale and I'm gonna try to get back from my parents sometime for the midday one. We've got something for my cousins up there.
Okay.
My uncle wizard.
That one follows the same order. It comes down the hill, have some services over here and then on the St. Anne Cemetery.
Right. So we have that. The library is, where's the thing? Wednesday, June 18th from 12:00 to 4:00, they're kicking off their summer reading program. And this year, it's called the Pop into Summer Reading Program and they will have, and they've applied for, and we're gonna talk about, a popcorn truck there for the kids who have given free popcorn and whatnot. That's from 12:00 to 4:00 on Wednesday, the 18th. And we have that too. Anyone else have anything they want me to announce here?
Nope, I don't have anything. Nope.
There you go.
Okay, minutes, we have two sets of minutes. We didn't have people from this meeting when I was on vacation here, so we have the April 16th that you guys will have to approve without me, and then the one from last week ago.
I just had a correction to the April 16th minutes on the second page. Under number four, update for 2024 Lenox Regional Community Development Block Grant Program. The last bullet point says roof repairs, and it should be roof repairs. That's it, that's all I got.
So do you make a motion? So I'll make a motion for approval of minutes for April 16th and May 7th, and I'll recuse myself. We should do these separately.
Why are we doing separate?
April 16th first.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I wasn't here, so that's not a vote for me. And then I'll move to approve the ones from, excuse me?
May 7th.
May 7th, which was just three of us.
Second.
And yeah, three of us, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night upstairs.
Right. Administratively, I think we've got minutes out of the way. Anybody here to talk during open forum? Please?
I've never done this, so many more in Pine Hill Road, Lenox. I wanna thank you very much for the new enhanced light on Houston Gate East Street. Thank you so much. I'm finally going down that street again. And I'm coming as a citizen and also the managing director at Canyon Ranch. But on the 18th, we are gonna be going in front of the ZBA for hopefully a cell phone tower on our property, which will be a direct line to the town. So not only will it enhance for all of our tourists and each of us, especially with Verizon, to be able to have service downtown, of course, our guests, this is one of the biggest complaints that we hear from our guest at Canyon Ranch, and really for fire as well as police and emergency services to be able to have better access and cell phone coverage. It'll actually hit very close to their new public safety building. So I would just ask if you're around on that day and if the Select Board would support that, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure will support it. So why don't we send a letter to the ZBA in support of the cell tower?
That's a great idea.
Really amazing.
Can you, do you want me to drop her? Do you wanna drop something out?
Put it in work.
Okay. I think we should do that ahead of that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
To Robert.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed when you're, when you're complete, fingers crossed and when the safety building, when we get the things out of the way for the mandatory communications there, hopefully step up cell service in town to match all the people that visit.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hi, Kate.
Kate McNulty-Von, Ten Post Road. I'm gonna throw my planning board hat on for one second here. As someone who worked on the cell phone tower in that particular bylaw, we are thrilled to hear that someone is taking advantage of it.
I'm gonna write a letter.
Yes, sorry. Letters galore. It took quite a lot of work to get that through and we're very appreciative that Canyon Ranch has stepped up to the plate and is doing that. Now I'm gonna stick a different hat on. This would be the chair of the Lenox Affordable Housing Trust, and I'd like to make some comments in support of the Penrose request for the grant. And for some of you who were, Dave came by the other night when Penrose presented the Ford, which is the first Penrose project that's up at what we still call Brushwood Farms. And we did have a pretty good crowd. Would've been great to have filled the room, but it wasn't quite that, that good. Still, that particular project is going to bring 65 units of one, two, and three bedroom new rental housing to Lenox, which is fabulous. We have no housing except a few random family housing houses, or I should say, units available through the Curtis for families. Everything else is senior designated as far as affordability in Lenox goes. So we're really looking forward to having these units, which are going to be deed restricted for affordable. And so then we go to the second Penrose project. And we are completely, the trust is completely in favor of that. We were able to add additional money to their request for funds to show community support when that was needed. We put in a total of $300,000 because we totally support it again. It will bring housing to Lenox and to the region that's absolutely needed. We're way behind. People I know are concerned about the impact in town of those units. They need to be reminded, it's only 133 units of new housing, which is great for a lot of folks. In the 1980s, we had a population here of 6,500 people. We are cruising at 5,000 lately. We can certainly welcome new residents and new folks to our town. If you can come in and rent, that's often a toe hold into buying in a place that you learn to love. So we do support this. The only fear that we might have, and I speak individually here and as a trust member, is that this might in some way slow the project down. We would not like to see that happen. The sooner these units come into play, the faster we've achieved our subsidized housing inventory percentage. We are mandated by the state to have at least 10% of our year round units affordable to folks.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to be cognizant of the time.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Yep.
You're speaking to the entirety of affordable housing now, whereas the grant is specific for a traffic study to be presented regarding what can be done with the road. So I understand that you're speaking on behalf of the concept in general, but the grant is quite specific to traffic at this point.
Yes, I understand that. But as somebody who watches ZBA things and comprehensive permits, I don't wanna see any slowdown to this because we do need these units. So thank you very much.
Tom Talasco, 12 Hillside Drive, Chair of the Lenox Community Preservation Committee. I just wanna speak in favor of the grant partnership between the town and Penrose as well. As many of you know, the CPC had concerns, you know, about, about the traffic issues around 238 Pittsfield Road and anything that can be done to, you know, mitigate those concerns with the turning lanes and et cetera would be, would go a long way. Thank you.
Anybody else here other than for future items?
I'm gonna wait until their presentation.
Fair enough. Okay. Are you ready with our consent agenda?
I will read the consent agenda. First, we have a donation acceptance request. Chief Chris O'Brien is seeking permission to accept a $25 donation in appreciation for the fire department. A special license request for a one day liquor license submitted by Lenoxdale Fire Company for wine and malt beverages only Friday, May 23rd from 6:00 to 11:00 at Lenoxdale Firehouse, 28 Elm Street in Lenoxdale for the fire company's annual dinner. And a certified bartender will be present.
Mm-hmm. You sure?
I'm tip certified.
Who is that person?
Who's that guy? Who's that guy? I went through this last year. I got tip certified.
Give a signature cocktail certainly.
All right. Okay, keep going, you guys.
Sorry.
Special license request, a one day liquor license submitted by Oscar Halig for all alcoholic beverage Saturday, August 23rd from 5:00 to 10:00 PM at Venford Hall, 104 Walker Street for a private party. A certified bartender will be present. And we have a mobile food establishment request submitted by the Lenox Library for Patriot Pop to cite their mobile food establishment on the Lenox Library property for the Pop into Summer Reading kickoff event on Wednesday, June 18th from 12:00 to 4:00. And next we are gonna authorize or vote to authorize the town manager to sign the Berkshire County Municipal Electric Aggregation Contract. And I can read this, but Jay, would it be better if you could explain that just a little bit to everybody so people would understand?
This is something that we have previously done with Chris. It's just so that we don't have to meet when he hears about, you know, we have an aggregation for power that people can opt into or the town opts into.
Town opts in all of its electrical load. It's lumped in with about 24 other communities here in the county. Colonial Power Groups are representative. They take that entire power load of all those communities. They reach out and they get bid for electricity. Because of so much electricity, it comes back a little less, usually maybe a cent or two less, depending on the time of year, for the market rate. But when we get the bids back, the bids come in at about 11 o'clock in the morning, and then in order to lock in those rates, we have to do it about 1:30 in the afternoon. So it's impossible for the executive contracting authority to do that. We'd have to plan a meeting and assemble it. So most communities just ask the town manager participate in that and then have the authorization to sign it so we can lock in those rates, which get passed off to all of our residents. And once we do that, we'll send more information out to everybody. I think everyone gets a postcard. And more to come, but right now it's just, we're out to bid and take advantage of right now, which is an aggressive electric market.
Okay, thank you. I'd suggest that we do the special license for the Lenoxdale Fire Company first, 'cause I'll have to recuse myself from that vote, and then we can do the other ones together.
All right, well, I'll move to accept the special license request for the annual party at the Lenoxdale Firehouse on the 23rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda as it has been presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ed. Didn't rip you too much.
It's okay. I love it.
I'll see you then. Okay, we have Penrose here. And I guess I will announce that they're here to talk about partnering with the town on a supplemental grant application to support roadway and infrastructure improvements for their second hoped development on 238 Pittsfield Road. And this came to Jay's and my attention from Eamon. It's essentially, I don't wanna speak for you, but it's essentially, you're looking to respond to CPC concerns that we expressed regarding traffic, and there's a grant available to pay for exactly that, to work with DOT and other folks.
Sure.
And we need to sign it for you or on your behalf.
Yeah. Did I? There you go. Did it go? Okay. So I'll do my presentation, but you also have this back. So I think just to kind of quickly describe what we're doing, we, yeah, we got a lot of feedback that.
Introduce yourself first.
My name is Rebecca Schofield. I'm a senior developer at Penrose. So, and I've also been the project manager for the housing at Brushwood. And as part of the new development in 238, we got feedback that the community was concerned about traffic there and road safety. So we looked at available grants to kind of work with the town to solve this problem. And at the state level, there are, turns out, a lot of pots of money that we can apply for and leverage to support road improvements specifically. So we could add lighting signals and other turning lane. And we have some plans to show that capture some of that. There are also additional kind of pieces of the infrastructure scope that we'd like to kind of share with you, pricing and opportunities to, again, use that, these state resources to apply for and leverage for this project. So I think, you know, we'll kind of describe it in more detail, but these are all pieces of the project that would really benefit the town and, you know, we'd love to be able to do that as part of our partnership to apply for these funds and, and further support that infrastructure as part of the deal. So.
While you're getting loaded up, one thing that I had clarified, so I'll state this for the record also, if, so we have to be the signer as the town.
Exactly, yep.
But it is, it is to, you know, address traffic concerns for 238. Those, the grants that are available, we can still apply to as a town. That's not mutually exclusive. So if Eamon and the planning office, the land use office wanted to apply for other similar grants, this is not going to hurt our chances as a town, so.
Totally, they can, yeah.
We can endorse this without sacrificing anything that's available.
Yeah, absolutely. And the funds that we're applying for are specific to supporting housing development. So I think, just to kind of take a step back on the structure of the grant, we would expect that it would, you know, the town has to press send, but the grant would flow through the town and would be captured as part of our development budget. So again, would support costs that we would facilitate in the road related to the development, but would be public infrastructure, public property or related to public property, so that it's pretty clearly connected to that, those state funds, if that makes sense. So just to quickly talk through a few slides that we put together, the grant that we're all referring to is called the Community One Stop for Growth. That's a state funding initiative, again, supporting housing, infrastructure and economic development projects. So that's administered by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to help communities plan and, and facilitate housing growth and affordable housing development specifically. So we're looking at the Housing Works Infrastructure Program, which is, again, one of these many pots of money. And as you're describing, it's, you know, there are many others that the town could continue to apply for. And that provides grants for infrastructure improvements needed to support this housing. There's also a pot of money called like the rural, what's rural grant?
Development fund.
Yeah, and that's, again, development specific for rural communities and obviously Lenox qualifies there. So we're seeking this funding to support potentially our current design and engineering costs and permitting that are critical for this road and pedestrian infrastructure. And then additional public road infrastructure such as traffic signals, turning lanes, pedestrian safety measures. So we expect that the award would, we'd apply next week. The deadline's early June. And we would hear in September, and then we would expect to start construction spring, maybe summer 2026, so we could kind of front load that work. But we'd have a little time to coordinate with you all, make sure we get the grant and that we have the construction contract and that we're all doing this in partnership. So I think our, our understanding is that this addresses the concerns that we've heard from folks in town who have expressed concerns about increased traffic related to the development and then the pressure on the infrastructure, again, related to that. So this funding request really reflects our commitment to partner with you all to address those concerns and, and really ensure that this new housing and the broader community is supported by safe and sustainable infrastructure. So that's big picture, a lot of text, but I hope, I hope that helps kind of frame this. This is the site. I think folks are super familiar with that. Little more zoomed in. And this is our site plan, so showing how the new construction will connect to the road. And to get a little more specific, this is the utility plan. So we're showing some storm water management infrastructure here that will manage runoff from the highway. This is a water main that is quite old and a sewer main that connects to the street. So we've added those to the list of infrastructure improvements that we can make related to this grant. And then obviously the, the roadway in question is this connection to Pittsfield Road and managing traffic around that.
Can I just stop you and ask?
Please.
Are you in a roll here?
No, no, it's great.
You, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about, I don't wanna get into a big spiel about the traffic and all that kind of thing, but you mentioned sewer and water.
Yeah.
Along that area. Would this grant be focused on just that area? Because that sewer line goes all the way down to New Lenox Road, and that's a big, big project.
It would just be the sewer that would connect to our property.
So just.
Yeah, and that, and that would connect in the road. And as part of the road work, you know, milling, repaving, we would be able to address the sewer. It's like right here. So I think that would be a whole other.
So it doesn't help us out as far as that sewer line on that.
Right, it's replace, it's replacing this stretch and the sewer in the road. So I think what it would do is, when you do replace the sewer, it would prevent excessive roadwork later on, which, which I think does help, so you're not tearing up the road in several years when you get that grant. But there's also, you know, an opportunity to ask for more funds from the state to support that. And I know that the town has considered a lot of grants for, related to sewer infrastructure. So I don't, I don't know the cost of what it would take to rip up the rest of the sewer as it, as it extends. So I, I think this is, this is a little more limited in scope. And, and again, because the funds are so specifically related to supporting development, I think that you, you would have some limit on the amount of sewer you could replace because it would have to be supporting housing directly.
Related to that, because that edge point is valid. I mean, the sewer is not up to snuff and it's in a state road, so, you know, it's the kind of thing like with Walker Street, for example, where we would think we might contribute something, but we would hope it would be an eventual DOT project of some sort along those lines. I lost my train of thought. But I, I guess what I'm saying is, will the study, not the funds to actually do the work, but will the study be able to characterize how much additional demand the, the development will create to that sewer line? Because if it's limited already, we'd like to know what additional.
Can I ask you? Correct me if I'm wrong, is there, there's plans, we know there's a capacity issue along that sewer line.
Yeah.
I think there's plans in the, in the, basically add these large holding tanks.
Exactly.
To, they'll basically hold sewage and slowly send it out to that main line to avoid any, you know, any, any issues basically, so it won't stress out that, that section rather than, I think when I talked to Bill about this, I think he'd estimated it was like $20 million or something to replace that entire stretch down, down Route 7. So it's being addressed through these, this holding.
Right, so, so that's exactly what we've done at Brushwood, is we have a sewer, a sewage holding tank that is on like a timed release. So when there's a storm event, that will hold up to 48 hours of sewage, and then we can slowly release that back into the system so it's not overloaded. So that's, that's what we would do here as well.
Mary, I did the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
A, a lot of this is, everything's so interrelated, right?
I know.
Putting a, a project, particularly this one, that's not next to where there was already a light and already a hotel, we sort of need to be cognizant of this because we're upgrading our wastewater treatment plant. We have future plans to upgrade sewer along those same lines. And so the timing should be really well coordinated with, you know, Eamon and Bill Gop of DPW to, you know, be aware of when things might come online. I mean, we're, I know this is a study for something that's long down the road.
Well, yeah, no, and I, I do wanna talk about that study a little bit and, 'cause you've, you've mentioned it a handful of times. We have a, we have a traffic study that shows minimal impact, but this, this is specific, which, which basically means in, and we've talked to MassDOT about this a lot, in their eyes, we don't need to do anything. So we're applying for these funds to go above and beyond that because we understand that the town asked us to do that. So as part of this partnership, it's an opportunity to leverage some additional funds for traffic and roadway and infrastructure improvements because there's gonna be housing here. So that, that housing development that's proposed is an opportunity to secure some funds for this work from the state that would otherwise be hard to compete for or in terms of the H-WIP program inaccessible. So I, I hope that helps, like, we, we already have, and we, we have 70% design development, so we already have an engineer that's looked really closely at this, who, you know, as Eamon has mentioned, already designed the holding tank and the system and water pump and all of that, and is, is working to kind of compensate for the issues related to existing infrastructure. But this is proposed as something above and beyond, again, what would typically be required because we think it would be something that the town would really benefit from in the long term. So, yeah, and happy to kind of talk more about coordination and not have to do things over and over again, of course. But again, I think because it's related to the housing development, it gives us a really strong advantage competing for these funds and securing them in the near term. I'm almost done also with this. So this is just some examples of what funds will go towards related to the road. There's a catch basin, catch basin treatment unit, which was required by the Conservation Commission in our kind of review, particularly because there will be runoff from the highway into the new road that's created. Additional pedestrian safety measures, we would restore any sidewalk that we have to do to widen the road that we have to move. There's also an existing fire hydrant that will need to be relocated. And then traffic signage, you know, we could do like a flashing intersection sign or something. So again, that's, we would basically immediately work with MassDOT to approve those improvements as soon as the grant comes through. And they, they've already had a lot of conversations with us, Mary Beth, with Gwen, with everybody about kind of what would be proposed here. But I think with the funds that, you know, that will actually really motivate them to approve some changes. And this is just a kind of zoomed in example, 'cause, you know, I think specifics are, again, really helpful to see the potential to add a turning lane and some improvements along the roadway that we would make. So catch basins, some relocating, a new road built. And then this is our, our summary of scope that we think would be eligible. When we really dug in with our contractor and engineer, it turns out there's a lot. So some basics are just, you know, relocating fire hydrant and some sewer connections, catch basins, and then the storm water system related to the highway runoff, traffic signage, like that flashing sign, and then creating an excavation that's kind of along the roadway and related to excavating for the sewer and water mains. And then the paving and road work is, is a catch-all, but it's, it's definitely pretty clearly, I think, related to the existing road, milling, repaving, permitting, striping, all the stuff that would be associated with the improvements where pursuing in front of the connection to the site. That's it. So I can pause.
I think it's great that you have taken the comments that you've heard at CPC and found a pot of money within the state to apply to help do this feasibility study and show that you are good faith partners with the town in pursuing the requests that we're making of you.
I guess I, I do.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I wanna clarify again, we're not suggesting a study. We're suggesting that we apply for these grants to directly support the work that's already been engineered and proposed. So I, I think we have, you know, and we would coordinate with the town to make sure that the, that we're responding to the requests, like, hey, these are the roadway improvements that y'all think would be really effective, right? And here's the signage that we think DOT would approve and, and again, be helpful and protect pedestrian safety. But we, we do wanna make sure that these funds are used for construction because that's the best, like a planning, a, a study, a feasibility study, maybe we could get 20K for that, but we want, we want big money for the actual work, so.
So that last exchange is a little bit where you lost me.
Okay, sure.
The, I, I 100% understand that you have taken our concerns from CPC, 'cause I sat on the CPC, or do. But your original application has a traffic study from VHB, who I'm very familiar with. I've done tons of projects where they did the traffic study. That traffic study was 2020, 2021. And traffic volume, traffic speed, the number of new commercial enterprises along that whole stretch, all the way up to the Pittsfield line has greatly increased since then. Anecdotally, I mean, it's a road I drive four times a day, north and south. BBL, the new hotel, it's opening in July. They just were doing, last week, the final connection. State police were there, cones, cars from New York State otherwise, running over the cones, not understanding which lane to switch to. You know, I, I'm just describing that this road. You know, I I'm just describing that this road, no one drives the speed limit in the summer. If you sit, you know, anywhere near Lime Kill and Count, more than at least fifty percent are out of state cars now in the summer. And, uh, you know, so.
Sure. Can I?
I I guess I'm just saying, when we were were concerned about traffic, I I skip anybody else's concerns in CPC because I'm not speaking for them today. I'm I'm just speaking Neil, who's done a lot of DOT work. A flashing light or, you know, a turning lane. I I still feel that the state either needs to actually have a light or something major there because there's so many accidents on that road. You know, again, I went through DOT's own stats from the VHB study that ended in twenty one till today. And the accidents are like triple for here what they were in the study. So it it's just the speed and the volume of traffic there that it, which is why I I'm not saying no to anything here. But I I still want a decision note after approving this grant, which says, we looked at what DOT will do, we've spent money, there's a new traffic study, it's real world for today and our plan reflects that, not like sort of, this is already saying go to the construction.
Sure. So that that definitely makes sense. And I I just want to pick up on a couple of things you mentioned. The VHB study, I think, actually wasn't for our proposed project. It was for the brewery. Because we 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 only started working on Brushwood in twenty twenty one. Um, and that that actually has a lot more capacity and I think they like a lot more traffic and I think they still found it was a minimal impact. And again, like, I understand things have changed a lot. We we did an updated study probably a year, year and a half ago, and then I I also reviewed that study again with Fasen O'Neil, who we were working with before our last CPC meeting. And they just, they just confirmed that no changes, no significant finding. We we could definitely engage them again and look at it again. Um, absolutely. I I think that the, let me just, so and and the plans we proposed, I think, are are pretty straightforward with turning lanes and additional signage. We did also talk to our engineer about the traffic light question and and it's a really, they they described that it's a really hard barrier at Mast dot to get that traffic light approved.
Keep circling back to this.
Right. So so I think that, you know, like if you want, if you want to conduct another study to show Mast dot that we need a light, if if that's what I'm kind of picking up on, then we can, you know, sure, these funds could support that. But I think that, again, there's so many very high barriers to entry for getting that light considered that maybe we could just have an initial conversation with them and see if that's even feasible. Um, but our the strong answer we've heard from folks we've talked to is that this is not a good candidate for a new light. So we're we're just kind of throwing everything else at it, basically.
I think what we're what we're talking about tonight is just one little stretch of the road where you are. I get that. So we can't get off the cannons. But as we all well know, the Pitzo Lennox Road has changed so much in in the last five years that I think it's, we need to, and we, I don't want to mess up this part of the planning to go all the way, but I think we need to ask the state to address that whole road right from from Brushwood Farm all the way north because it's not the same road it was in twenty twenty one or twenty anything. It's a different road. It's a different animal right now. And I think when we do something, we need to coordinate it all the way. And I don't want to mess up what you're asking for because we're only talking about that one little thing tonight. I get that. I understand that. But I'm just saying that so everybody knows where I'm coming from. I think I don't know what the magic answer is, but it's it's different and it's gonna, I don't know if it's gonna cause bottlenecks or accidents or what it's gonna cause, but it's gonna cause something.
Maybe maybe a helpful way to frame this is that this is kind of a a gateway to really push Mast dot to look at the road more specifically because I think you would need and this, this is just my perspective. I I don't know, but I think you would need to go through Mast dot in order to get the funds that you would need from the state to effectively up update the road, add add things kind of all along, as you're saying. I I understand it's been impacted like over several miles. Um, so so I guess this would be a really good way, again, because there's housing plans that'll help leverage state funds and it's not Mast dot's money and it's an opportunity for them to kind of take take a harder look and initiate that broader scope. Yeah. Yeah, which I think I think is really useful and I.
I I completely agree with that. The thing I'm stuck with because I'm I'm so in favor of housing. Every day it's reported on in the paper. So it's it pains me to say it. I I'm so in favor of the concept of the project, but I can't help but see what I see every day, which is accidents, lane closed, police out there, they were out there today, you know, someone two days ago, a truck turned the wrong way on New Lenox Service Farm, the mobile, got pulled over by the state and everybody's all the way backed up to past Rolling Hills. So it's I I feel like the I I know I'm sounding a really negative guy here. I'm trying to my hardest to solve this. I mean, you know, I was involved when we didn't have a bypass. Like forty years ago when we built it and and this, this is how grand this is because Berkshire County hasn't been a priority for DOT compared to Boston and the NBA, MBTA and everything. You know, Secretary Healy was just out here when Jay like. Where we finally, after thirty years, got road miles as opposed to populations in account to what we get. Chapter ninety. There really should be like a north, south, separate thing altogether from having to go from, say, New Lenox Road to the Pittsfield Line, that whole, you know, Guido's Gas Station, new Starbucks. New hotel, new hotel, new hotel, new car wash, two new car dealers. Everybody, that's that's all new since five years ago. Not Guido's, but the car dealers, the Starbucks, the.
Yeah.
And it's.
No, it sounds like death by thousand cuts, right? Little by little.
And so, you know, it's, you guys have already identified this property. And it's great for housing. I don't, I I guess it's not the scope of this discussion to say, I mean, we want to say yes to the grant. Saying yes also sounds like it just puts everything in the motion and doesn't do anything to ameliorate the.
Well, I I'm gonna look at it for choose to look at it more the way Rebecca's looking at it. And this is another opportunity. Um, it will provide another look. Um, yes, there's been incredible development along that strip and maybe this new housing development along with, you know, the hotel opening this summer, that hotel opening will give us some more information as well.
But saying yes to this doesn't allow us to see what that does before.
It doesn't, but I think, but I think it also forces um, DOT to take a really strong look at what's going to be happening by getting this tran- these transportation funds.
They'll have to see it, but what are they gonna do? I mean, we're talking about a seventy five million dollar fix, which is another road.
Understood.
That's not even remotely on the table.
You're right.
They won't approve a light. I mean, the last time we had a bad accident, which followed one a few years later on the bypass, the DOT's answer was to close the crossing. At Hubbard Avenue. Give us a new road. Let's just close roads and make dead ends on two sides. So I'm just trying to be wary of how many accidents, how many tractor trailers I've seen in a row. I mean, the Walmart trucks go up that, the MVN trucks go up that. You know, and I I've seen those trucks in the rain not be able to stop when someone's up there.
Yeah.
Which is why they didn't want to give us a light because in the winter time, it's a hill. They figured that the trucks couldn't start up the hill. So remember that? New Lenox Road. Yeah. So, I mean, there's all kinds of issues as to why we won't get a light. I mean, you've been in the business since you were a kid, so you you you've got to be cognizant of what the requirements are.
Well, yeah, we built Route seven. Built a bypass where the safety building is. But, you know, it it pains me to I mean, I I I think the idea is we should approve the grant, but when it it started to sound like this isn't studied with a decision node afterwards, it sounds like this is we're moving forward and it almost sounds like we're speaking on behalf of CPC now to just be a whole, you know, is there any, Tom, does we, do we have to do anything with CPC or?
We're not asking for anything from CPC here. Um, I I think this is just responding to some of the ideas and questions that we got at CPC meetings and trying to go above and beyond what was required by ZBA, what's required by Mast DOT, what's required per traffic. Like, we're just trying to do our best to go above and beyond to address any potential impact of new housing on this road and as part of that, improve some infrastructure for for overall traffic safety. We can only, as I think you're saying, we can only do so much, but we at least want to try to compensate for an additional development and again, go above and beyond, like, use this funding to go above and beyond what would at the baseline be approved by the state for the project. And and with this extra funding, they'll say like, okay, like, the state has required that you do this extra roadwork. Cool. But without that, like, they're funding housing. So without additional state funding, it's really hard for us to advocate for public infrastructure improvements. Because they'll say that makes your project more expensive. We can't fund it. So that that's kind of the, I I think that to be able to partner housing development plus public infrastructure not only gives some really important incentives to DOT to do a little more, but also shows the state that this this successful partnership between housing and public infrastructure improvements is a great way to spend money and and Lennox can be a model that way as well. So that's that's kind of, you know, I'm throwing a lot of different ways to frame it, but we've thought about this a lot and and think it's.
I just wrestle, infrastructure to me is roads, bridges, railroads.
Sure.
Not sidewalks and fire hydrants and stop signs.
Right. I mean, those those are some smaller thing. We, I guess I'll I'll, sorry to interrupt, but I guess I'll say this. We wanted to give a menu of things. So you can say, we want to have, like, and and this is a little bit over the million that we're going to apply for. You can say, we want to have most of this go to the road and take care of the fire hydrant in your own budget, in your, in the rest of your development budget and we'll we'll do that. But we wanted to show you all of the eligible and there are probably more that we could still think through. But eligible uses for this fun, for these funds that would touch public space.
Is there any opportunity for you to speak with, because it's state level? I mean, I understand the state has the limits on your project and what you can ask for. And I I guess it's problematic at the state because at the state level, no one's thinking globally about the roads in tiny little rural western states weren't prepared for.
That's what these funds are for. It's exactly what these funds are for.
Sort of.
Sort of. Sure. Yeah.
Right? I mean, Walmart, Walmart's like ten daily trucks ought to be going, uh, it ought to be intermodal rail or something, which is a big statewide issue or, you know, things like that.
Sure.
But how about touching base with state police and would they, you know, put one of those you're going over the speed sign or more actively patrol that area when this is under development?
Sure.
I mean, that that's something I think would be useful.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could like, in partnership, write a letter and say, we're doing this development. The town is concerned about safety in this area based on all these data that you're that you're describing. You know, like, what can the police do about it? Here's what we think.
And we can certainly reach out to Francesca at DOT one. No?
I know her really well. She's gonna say Boston has to tell us what we can do and Boston's gonna say, we're not gonna put an eighty million dollar bypass in Berkshire County.
Well, I'm just trying to have a conversation, I guess, with DOT one state police. Any, you know, accident data that we have with regard to Route seven and twenty and try to have the conver- at least start the conversation and at least let them know that we're concerned about this. We're trying to do our part to develop housing for people in the county so that we can, you know, run our healthcare system, run our uh, tourism sector, our retail sector, you know, take care, yeah, take care of everybody in the schools, our uh, police and fire people and make sure that everybody has a a decent, safe place to live. And if we can't use our major transportation corridor, that's that's an impact that they need to pay attention to at the state level.
That, I, so you you and you and affordable housing people will know better than me. Who who at the highest level in the state who supports your initiatives would have any influence slash leverage on infrastructure people who are happy to design roundabouts in Boston?
It's it's the Secretary of Housing. Um, and I think, and and he's quite accessible. Um, and because this project has had, has submitted application, it's kind of on everyone's radar. So I think, again, like, I think the project is a great way to get their attention and to start to raise these broader issues. And then if Secretary Augustus Augustus has an opportunity to, you know, we can, we can write him a letter too and we can kind of bring these issues together and frame that for him to to push and to try to yeah, to try to get Mast dot in here.
Now we're starting to hone in. I I think something would be useful because, you know, when when you know, when Andy Meisberg is sold different drummer to Berkshire BMW, I mean, you know, no one at the state had to say, hey, that's another three hundred car trips a day added to this corridor. Who's globally thinking about it? But since you folks are working with the state. You can say, we're like one of the last people into this very, very, very crowded transportation corridor. But there's already being overused and it's it's not, speed limits aren't being met. Big huge trucks are using it because bridges are closed in other areas. So we're adding to what's already a concern with safety. There's a lot of car accidents, et cetera. Can you talk to your counterparts in the state to?
Totally.
So we're going to the Housing Secretary, the Transportation Secretary and who's the Rural Affairs Director.
You know, we're gonna invite them out here for the ribbon cutting at Forge and for the groundbreaking at two thirty eight. So, you know, I think they do. Housing does really get attention from those folks and I think that that's a great, a great way to use our partnership to.
It has to get constant attention. Coming out here and shaking hands at a ground cutting.
Tease up with context. I'll go to Boston myself. I've done it to the DOT many, many times.
Well, we'll go together. Sure.
But I think I think we we started this and it was, we're trying to dig you for doing your part and I I don't want to do that. We can't make you responsible for the whole Pittsfield Lennox Road. But I think that we probably should go with this, but somehow leverage this into something that can help us with context somehow to look at the big issue that's going to be there. Because it's going to be there.
Move the work together and get a letter and then get some FaceTime with people who might actually be able to move the ball on this.
Because, I mean, it it it's easy to say, oh, man, let's send all of our police guys up there. And our police, one of our officers was patrolling just north of DPW, you know, and up to Lenox Commons and he pulled a few, quite a few people over today, but it's tough. I mean, you know, I, it's an exercise starting in the fall, I told Jay this, probably you were in room two, I said, I pegged my, sped up my cruise control on. I said, I pegged my, sped up my cruise control on the speed limit up there. And it's like, you know, I, I almost got ramped the road by a.
We drove by the site before we came and I was going, speed limit got hogged at, that was, we had that experience.
I mean, dude, last week, a pickup truck pulling a trailer full of equipment and stuff. Didn't like this guy on his left, didn't like me in the right lane. When he finally got his chance, he like, almost rearing that guy, pulled over so fast and then had to go back the other way so fast. That a, a leaf ball or something flew out of his trailer and like rolled around on the side of the road and he didn't stop.
Did you pick it up?
Did he notice?
He was just so intent on.
Did it still work?
Going seventy miles an hour there.
Geez, yeah, yeah. No, I, I hear ya. I think, again, like, we, we, we drive around here too, we see it. I, I know it's not, like, we're not here at peak rush hour time, so it's a little bit different. Um, but it's, yeah, it's, I understand. Every time we come by, there's new signs, new construction, it feels different over the last several years for us too. So, I, yeah, completely understand. And again, like, you know, we're here tonight to try to describe an opportunity to partner to, to get at some of these bigger issues. And I do, I do agree, it's just a first step. Um, but it, you know, in, in our research, in our conversations, in figuring out where we can get additional funds to support some of these ideas. Th- this is, this is what we came up with. So, and we think a million dollars would be pretty effective. We hope we can get that, even half a million dollars, I think would actually also be pretty effective at least to, you know. And, and we would, we would look to you guys to, are we prioritizing water and sewer? Are we prioritizing roads? What specifically are we going to go to Mast Dot to get approved, specific to the road? You know, I think that we have to see what we get awarded and then, and then work together to, again, prioritize that. Um, but that's, that's how we see this piece of the process unfolding. Um, and yeah, it's, it's the, it's the thing we could think of to try to leverage some additional resources and help meet these goals.
All right, I don't want to keep beating this, because I, I understand that, you, you can't do everything. None of us can just wave our magic wand and say, Boston, pay attention out here, because we've got a lot of things being built. And we haven't changed our road patterns for fifty years.
Yeah.
Since we built the bypass.
So, when we finish this, I wonder if you can give me a little latitude to talk to these folks about Brushwood?
Yeah, I, I feel like I overdid it already, so I'll step away.
So, I, I would approve that we.
Well, then he just asked.
I think about a different subject, don't I, Dave?
Yeah, it is different.
So, we can do this first.
Okay, so I would move that we approve the request for the partnership with Penrose on this particular application.
Second. All in favor of that?
Hi.
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 Thank you.
So, while we've got representatives from everybody here in the room. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the hard work on Penrose. It's a really nice project, it's coming out great. But as my colleagues will tell you, one of my biggest concerns has been, uh, the fact that the Lennox residents aren't getting any priority. And I went to the meeting the other night and I was told why. But we, I never, you gave us a letter that we had thirty units reserved for Lennox residents. And that the rest would go to a budding towns, uh, once the thirty units, which was fifty percent, were filled. And then you said they went to the state and the state disapproved that. And the state said, no, you've got to open it up to these nine, ten, twelve towns and a lottery process. Am I right so far?
So, not quite, because we actually never committed to thirty, I, I'm not, I don't think I saw the letter. But there was never a thirty unit.
There was never a commitment, it was. What we're doing is we're providing a million dollars in CPC funds with the understanding that we were going to prioritize people who live, work.
Yes.
And go to school in Lennox. But then that whole application, because it's state and federal funds, goes to the Executive Office of Housing. And Community Development, and they've never approved more than seventy percent for the local area.
Okay, I'm going to go back and dig that out, but.
Sure, that's fine.
But, but the fact is that, you know, based on the information that I had, and I think the rest of you remember that I did specifically say, we've got to have this for Lennox residents. And based on that information, people are asking me, like, a waitress asked me the other day, when's my apartment going to be done? And a lady living with her mother said, when, when am I going to get it? And an employer said, when can I put an ad in the paper saying, possible housing available? So.
They can definitely do that.
I, I understand that, but if you go to, take Pittsfield, for example, they had, uh, the terrorists there, what was it?
White terrorists.
White terrorists, thank you. White terrorists, forty-one units, they had six hundred applications.
Mm-hmm.
All right, six hundred.
Yeah.
So, taking that and looking at what the other towns could contribute, we could have well over a thousand, two thousand applications. And four or five for Lennox. A Lennox resident would have more chance of winning mega bucks, mega bucks than they wouldn't get, getting an apartment.
Not necessarily.
Okay, tell me why.
Okay, because, okay, so there's sixty-five units that are going to be built.
Yes.
Forty-five of them will be available to Berkshire County residents.
Yes.
So, I don't know how the lottery system works, but anybody who lives in Lennox can fill out an application.
Absolutely, and so can anybody who lives in Pittsfield or one of those eight hundred towns.
That's right, that's right.
And given the demographics, we could be looking at several thousand applications.
That's absolutely correct.
So, nobody in Lennox is going to be guaranteed to get a unit.
Correct, however.
Yes.
The more people who apply in Lennox, the more people will be in the lottery from Lennox. And those people will have a higher preponderance of being selected.
That's not true.
No, not true.
Any applicant from Lennox has got the same exact chances.
As anybody. You're absolutely right, you're absolutely right. But I'm just saying, if there's a thousand people who, in Lennox who apply, and only a hundred and fifty from other places that apply.
Of course, of course, but that's not going to happen. I'll guarantee, I'll, I'll bet you fifty bucks that's not going to happen. I'll bet you that Lennox will, will have a, a, a smaller number, maybe thirty or forty people. As opposed to two or three thousand people from all the surrounding towns. That's what I think is going to happen. So, our workforce, the people who work in our fire department, our police department, our teachers, our DPW. The people we told that we were building housing for them are going to be left out in the cold, most likely.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, fine. If you can fix the lottery, that's true. But if it's a straight lottery and there's a couple thousand people, they're not going to get, they're, they're not going to have an edge. And originally, we talked about the folks in Lennox having an edge, a first refusal of right to go to this, this beautiful new project that you were developing. And I think, you know, I talked to Jay about it. And solving the workforce housing for the county, Lennox is solving it for the county. I don't know, you know, it's good for us, it brings people into the schools, I understand, it does a lot of things. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't help the people who are working at Canyon Ranch, Marivale, the other places who are looking for, for housing. There was actually one working at the Marriott, whose husband, or whose wife was a waitress. They said, boy, that commute won't be too bad, I can walk right to the housing right, right straight across. But that's not going to happen. What's your, what has your experience been with lottery?
Sure, so, I absolutely understand what you're describing. And I agree that there are no guarantees. I also want to emphasize that there are, there is still a seventy percent preference for, and I understand it's a dozen towns. That is the best we could do with the state. And we always ask, we were always asking them in our applications, in our conversations, seventy percent for Lennox. We had many meetings, the town attorney was part of that, like, we, like, the town was represented in all of this stuff and advocated for this local preference. They would not approve, just based on town demographics, and they just would not approve, uh, seventy percent preference for Lennox residents only. So, with that understood, and, and I think Smitty said this at the meeting too. With that understood, it still is really advantageous to have the seventy percent regional preference. Because without that, Lennox residents don't have any priority over anyone coming from anywhere else in the state. So, at least we have folks here from, like, it, without a seventy percent regional preference. Someone from Lennox is just as likely to get a unit as someone from Springfield or Boston. With the seventy percent preference, it is much more focused. And someone from Lennox is much more likely to get a unit than that alternate. I'll, I'll also note that folks within the local preference category for a lottery technically get, I guess you can think about it as like two bites of the apple, right? So, they're in this seventy percent local preference, those units are occupied first through the lottery. Then anyone that doesn't get a unit through that goes it back, it goes into the general pool. So, anyone that doesn't get a unit based on that local preference is still eligible for the other thirty percent of the units, so.
Yeah, that's statewide.
Yeah, that's statewide, yep.
Which, as you recall, I didn't remember I told you about the Pittsfield one that I was on. And it turned into a whole bunch of people from Lowell and Lawrence and Worcester and Springfield coming into that, coming into that, uh, development. I mean.
Yeah, Dave, like I said, we advocated for it.
I'm not, I'm not saying he didn't, didn't advocate for it, but I, I still think there's got to be something for the Lennox residents. I really, I really do, I, I just think that we represent them, they are our constituents.
I understand that.
And we should be advocating, nobody came back to this board and said, hey, they turned us down. We didn't have a, we didn't have a second bite of the apple, what, after, after you said that the Lennox residents were going to get preference. That's the last we heard until I went to the meeting the other night. And it said that, 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 that's not the way it was going to be, it was going to be a total lottery. So, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I love the project, I love all the work that you put into it.
No, I just.
I think it's a, a big advantage to the town. I just wish that Lennox residents had an opportunity to have first bite of that apple to go in there, so that we can.
So, Dave, to your point, I mean, I know you advocated and it was not approved. But I also understand your point, we are not specifically, we are serving our constituents by meeting housing goals and creating more units in the broad Berkshire County. But no one in Lennox has a specific advantage for property in Lennox, based on how the rules were determined. So, I think the messaging by the AFT, by CPC, by anyone involved in housing in Lennox needs to be very clear. When we promote things that we're saying are good for the town, we need to make sure that we're saying it's good because it's a globally or countywide good intention that we have an opportunity to participate in. But we are not saying that this is only for people that live and work in Lennox. When we message about this greater cause. And I'd also, this is just a completely spur of the mind anecdote, but when, when, you know, this came up a, a few days ago, talking to a FinCom person. They said, you know, every year we rehash out the school choice concept, right? And there's a large part that's like, oh, we don't want choice. So, I, I would ask all those, this is so great for us, even though advantage is no one precisely living in Lennox now to think that same way when they say, we don't want choice, or we do want choice. You, you, you can't, you, you can't say you're pro or against something, rah rah Lennox, when it's a thing that exists in Lennox, but it's not specific for Lennox residents.
Yeah.
It's just a global being aware of how we message things that I think is important.
And I, I just want you to also know that I've been very active in going to other affordable housing trusts in Berkshire County to try to get other trusts in Berkshire County to contribute to the second project. Because if we can get other trusts to contribute.
Yeah.
Then perhaps we can get a Berkshire County, solely Berkshire County second project designated.
That would be fine, because we're going into it with our eyes wide open, knowing exactly what's going to happen.
Right, yeah, because, like I said.
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be using our manpower and treasure totally. We should have some participation with, with the other communities that are going to utilize the project.
The, the other thing, I think that's important, and that's kind of one, one good benefit of this is to, you know, get the word out, get other communities wanting to spend money on affordable housing that will benefit their constituents also. The other piece is that I think that having Lennox partner and support affordable housing is also inspiring other local communities to build their own housing too. And Lennox residents would also have an opportunity to apply for housing in neighboring town. Like, it, I guess, I, I'm trying to explain like.
You're not from the area, are you? This is the most desirable place.
I, I know. It, it goes, it goes both ways. We want housing to be developed in the broader region. And I think that if other, other towns also develop housing, that will take the pressure off Lennox housing stock for Lennox residents who want to stay here formally.
Absolutely.
So, we're, we're hoping that we can inspire other folks to do this too.
I, I love that idea and I hope that works. It, it, it kind of goes the other way too.
Yeah.
Sadly, you know, our, our good fortune being a financially well-managed town since, you know, a long time, you know. You guys were probably in the slip where at some point, I mean, I've only been six years, but, you know, even going back to my school days and whatever. It has the weirdest unintended consequences. Like, I was sitting getting a car inspected next to a guy who drove in an ambulance from South County. I'm going to talk about what town, whatever. And I was just chatting with him, and he said, oh, yeah, you guys are building that safety complex. I said, yeah, yeah, it's going well. He didn't know that I was very, very involved with it. And he just offhand and say, yeah, you know, takes the pressure off us to have to building new infrastructure for public safety. Cause now you guys got that. I was like, oh, that's, so, that, that inspiring other communities to build affordable housing. Well, our, our safety complex is not inspiring at least one guy who drives an ambulance in South County to think we need to do something with our communication, because now Lennox is taking care of it.
I mean, we, we see that statewide with like, you know, cities and towns saying, we want to build more housing. And then neighboring cities and towns being like, okay, cool, pressure's off. Like, that's, it's really disappointing, but the alternative is that nothing gets built. So, it's, it's, yeah, it's a tight spot, I get it.
It, it's just difficult, you know, the.
Yeah, it's part of why 40B exists.
Yeah.
We, here in town have been perceived as being deep-pocketed for a long time. It's not that that's necessarily changed, but we finally invested in some very large projects. And I think the notion amongst people who have projects that haven't been discussed yet is, oh, we have plenty of money to do more projects. And now is actually the time that we really have to pause for a number of years before.
Yeah.
Committing our in-town resources or taxing our in-town residents anymore. Because we have to pay for the things that we started thinking about ten years ago.
Totally, and, and planning ahead and communicating with residents that you're doing, you're raising taxes or you're doing these projects and that there's going to be construction, but it'll benefit them and it's something that they care about. I think that's, that's complex messaging and people get impatient. And the Lennox residents, like, are waiting to see things that they've been, you know, hearing about for a long time. And they deserve to benefit from that, that's, that's the idea.
Benefit's not going to be living there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hope, I hope.
I hope so, but I mean, if we, if we get two or three living there, that would be a feat. I mean, we could have had a private developer build it and put ten percent out for, for affordable housing. And then we've got a collective of tax revenue on the rest of it.
But then what would you build with that revenue?
What's that?
But, but then you wouldn't, you wouldn't have as much housing that's affordable. You would only have ten units for all these people.
But Lennox residents would be having at, at least as much as they're going to get out of this lottery, I'll guarantee you that.
Oh, I don't think so.
You think we're going to get more than six?
I, I can't, I can't, I can't say.
Okay, well, Tom said at the town meeting, let's see how this one goes before we, we look into the, before we look into a future development. I agree one hundred percent with that, and so did the town.
I, I don't see, I don't see a scenario where building more units where Lennox residents can apply is a bad thing for Lennox residents who want to live in those units.
Okay.
I.
I don't disagree with that.
I disagree.
Where, where, where it gets touchy is that it's hard to call this a cost-free development to Lennox. Even though you're being funded by grants and affordable housing programs and 40B and all those things. There will be more times that the police that we pay with our taxes have to respond to these traffic problems. There will be more times that our DPW super will have to make sure that the pumps to the old sewer system from both Brushwood and two thirty-eight are working. Those are costs that we actually bear. Those are costs that we actually bear in our month, our quarterly tax bills that may or may not be supporting someone who actually lives in Lenox, depending on how many lottery winners live there. So I'm all in favor of housing, but please understand that there's, there's an indirect burden to people that pay the taxes in this town for the existing, existence of any project.
Right, I, I do wanna note that we and people who live in these buildings will also pay taxes. So it's more, more people in Lenox is more people paying taxes to that point. I also, I think I just wanna step back and, and note that no matter where people are coming from when they move in.
Are they paying real estate taxes?
We, we are paying real estate taxes, yes. Yep.
Yep. There's- And there'll be excise taxes paid by the people who live there who have cars and there'll be-
Real estate taxes.
Realist, not real estate, excise taxes.
Okay, real estate taxes are the ones that contribute to the school.
The project pays real estate taxes.
Yes, they do.
The project pays real estate taxes.
The project pays real estate taxes. And there's a mass law for affordable projects. There's a mass law that describes an income-based approach to real estate taxes. And we've been discussing this with the assessors and, and everybody. But yeah, we, we budget for taxes, we will pay taxes. I, I also, my, my point is that everybody that lives in these buildings will become Lenox residents. They wanna live here, they wanna invest in the community.
Absolutely.
And I, I know you're not disagreeing with that. I just, I understand they might be coming from different places, but they, they will be in these homes and they will go to the schools and they will have jobs here and they will participate in a way that, that is gonna be valuable. And I think, you know, as, as Kay was describing, the town used to be bigger. And, and I think this is actually like, a- as much as I, I agree with you and I understand that current Lenox residents wanna be able to live here and want an affordable home and that's important. I also just wanna acknowledge that these will all, these people living in these buildings will all be Lenox residents.
Yes, they certainly will. But that was never my issue.
No, I, I know, I'm just bringing a full circle.
Okay.
Yeah, I hear ya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, it's a broad discussion, so I, you know, I think this was appropriate because there are so many overarching things. I mean, yes, we used to be more populous, we are far more than five thousand right now, by the way.
It's just tracked, tracked in, yeah. Yeah, but it's more traffic and it's more transient and it's more, it's more complicated.
But the point is, we never had twenty-five thousand, you know, coming through our roads every day like we do these last few years.
Sure, sure. Yeah, understood.
But, um, so we're done with that. We are gonna move to an executive session for a discussion. So I'm gonna, do you wanna read it or do you want me to read it?
Don't you read it.
Okay, so, thank you everyone for that issue and for coming. And we-
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
It's really, great discussion, really appreciate it.
We have said, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll keep talking, thank you.
So to, this is the close of the meeting. I'm gonna ask us to, per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, we're gonna move to an executive session, session, pardon me, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be detrimental or have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, as I've declared, always says as the chair declares, and we won't be returning, so I ask for a roll call vote. Ed Leony?
David Rocha?
You know, Max Millian?
Max Sherf?
Meredith Metz?
All right, thanks everyone, that's the end of our public meeting. We won't be back here afterward, just gonna be next door.